Good evening. This is Tuesday, September twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note this being meeting is being recorded. And some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks will be able to see you. The ugly band T-shirt you decided to wear tonight, or anything you intend to or not, screen share on your computer. Anything that you broadcast will be captured and recorded forever and ever and will possibly wind up as a TikTok video. If you share it amongst your neighbors and friends. This is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members of the Planning Board. Uh, are present can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. A planning board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay, Jay Teach.
Here.
Timothy Wheeler.
Yeah.
Carolyn McDonald.
Here.
And Tom Sanford. Uh, with a quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at seven thirty-two P M. Tuesday, September twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board being conducted remotely consistent. With Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. Specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found at the Town of Berlin website. The governor's order suspends the requirement. Of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. And allows and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join this meeting. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After their concluding remarks, I will invite each board member by name to provide any comments, questions, penetrating insights and or emotions. Please hold all your insights until your name is called. Board members and speakers on the agenda. Please remember to remute your telephone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure that accurate minutes are recorded. And for any response, please wait till you yielded the floor, state your name before. Excuse me, before speaking. If a board member wishes to engage in conversation with another board member, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations happening at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. So.
You.
Nobody had any, nobody had any comments on the minutes, huh?
We, we haven't even got, oh, written comments. Oh. When did they go out?
I sent it to you a really long time ago.
Hmm. Like six minutes ago?
Guess I finished writing them.
I'll move the minutes from September twelfth.
So move, uh, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, uh, to prove the minutes of last meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Jay Teach.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you all. Um, one other thing that I have had, um, conversation. Um, I reached out to find out how they wanted us to handle that. Um, on the annual town meeting, the sum of money that we're going to be asking for, they would like us to do it as a special article like we've been doing it all along, so. Instead of going through the budget process with the, um, that they're collecting data for now. So. It's the same as what we've been doing all along.
I spoke to Kristen about it the other day and said that we would probably want to increase the amount, just given the fact that. So many parts of master plans are costing more and we haven't raised it for a long, long time and.
Right.
She said, she thought it made sense, so.
Okay, I reiterated that today when I was, was emailing her back and forth, so. They have an understanding. They're gonna pencil something into their overall budget.
Good.
Yep. Cool. Do we have any other? Mail or any business or anything like that that we need to react to?
Uh, no, we have a bunch of people signed up for the next meeting.
Okay. Um, let's see if anything was new today.
We do have a hand up from the town clerk.
Do you have anything else, Jay?
Um, looks like somebody wanted a zoning map that shows the multiple dwelling areas. We were talking about that last week. We have a zone, but nothing on the map. And someone's already responded, I think Eloise.
Okay, can you promote Eloise, please?
Well. I just wanted to let you know, I believe I sent you the updated map that was approved by the Attorney General. Last week.
Oh, yeah, that's right. But that's got all the markups on it. It's not like a new map. It's all, it's one with all the markups, isn't it?
The thing is, it's got their stamp on it. And as a result of getting that map, now we can update the zoning bylaws, period. And I did respond to the fellow on the. Um, the email that you just referred to and I told him that, uh. Multiple family dwellings are usually done as an overlay after a conversation with the Planning Board. Short and sweet.
Very good. So. Did the map that got stamped? Does, does that have our signatures on it?
No, it was the zoning changes, I think, on Article twenty-one.
Okay, so we should go to Central Mass and have the map redone, right?
Well, if you're gonna do it, um, and counter sign it at your next meeting, then I'll hold off. Printing, I'm having twenty-five, uh, zoning bylaws printed.
Right, but so it would make sense for us to get the map updated and include the updated map in the new. Printing, right?
That'd be wonderful.
Well, we didn't sign it, that's right. Cause the map says proposed changes.
Yeah, we need, uh. Uh, I can reach out to Matt. And share with him those changes to ARC. That's the main thing, right?
Right.
I'm trying to think if there's anything else we've changed over the last. I think everything else is up to date.
We had two rounds of ARC, didn't we?
Yeah, I wonder if. Do we show, I bet you we don't show the overlay for the senior housing at.
Highland Ridge.
Highland Ridge. On the zoning map, either, right?
You wanna see the map? I have it on my screen.
Yes, please.
Oh, no, we do.
You've done that part of it. I don't believe the affordable units have been submitted to the state yet, but that has to. Um. They have to get copies of the building permits and that goes to the selectmen. Only the selectmen can submit it.
So that would be a good project for the new housing coordinator.
How long do you think that would take?
The updated, the submission for the S H I?
Well, no, that's out of my hands. I'm talking about the zoning so I can get the, a new zoning bylaw printed.
Well, I think the nice thing is that Matt's already got these pieces. Done, so. Updating the map isn't that complex.
Can it be done in the next two weeks?
No, I wouldn't guarantee that, but I mean, why, are you pressured to, to print these? In the next two weeks?
Well. They're not considered legal until they are printed. See, once it comes back from, from the Attorney General, then I have to. I have to hustle to get it because that marks it as proper.
Is there, is this thing digital or is it, was it, is it hand drawn?
No, it's digital. You crank it out in no time, I would think. I just don't want to say that he's gonna do it in two weeks.
Well, if it's gonna be done in roughly two weeks, then I'll hold off printing. Twenty-five zoning bylaws.
I'll re, I'll reach out to him tomorrow.
And then could you give me, send me an email as to what kind of time constraints?
No, probably not.
Oh, okay.
Now, can, hello, Eloise, can you have them printed and then if the map gets done, we insert the map into the, into the twenty-five? Individual pieces? Cause right now they're only bound by that, um, you know, that, that black, um, binding stuff, right? You can add and subtract pages from that.
Yeah, usually we do put it on white, uh, cardstock and we make it the end page.
Right, right.
But does anybody actually get a paper copy anymore? They just download it?
Um, we have to do a paper copy because we have to do that as part of the submittal for the Attorney General.
Right, but does anybody else in the last couple of years ever come down and paid you forty dollars and gotten a copy or does everybody download it off the website?
If you need it for a legal matter, you would.
Yeah, cause then I have to, I have to certify it that it's correct. And I'm always apprehensive, cause. I could have had a senior moment. Not deliberately.
We also should get a double, digital copy and, and update what's on the website for the people that want it electronically.
Well, we do, but everything, see, depends upon, once we get it back from the Attorney General, which we just got it.
So give me, give me, um, a couple of days, will you? And I'll see if we can find out.
How about I'll have everything printed but not stapled together or attached together, just plain pieces of paper?
Does it matter that on the map, there's a big gap on Route sixty-two? At the town line? Kind of where the Dunkin' Donuts is?
Zoom that in? If you would.
Looks like it must be drive through a field and then you get back on a road on the other side.
What, what are you talking?
Right, Jay, Jay, zoom in. What two are you talking about? Please.
Um. I can move it here. Right there, right in the middle of your screen. See the missing, the roadways kind of missing for a little bit?
Yeah, but that's in Hudson. We don't care.
Ah, got it.
The world ends at the town line.
That's right.
That's right. Um, on the current zoning map, they do include, um, Highland Ridge as an overlay, so. It's not on this map that we're looking at, but, um, it is on the current one that Matt generated, so. I would think there would be no. Problem with that and, um. So basically he would include. All these red outline parcels into ARC.
Right.
What's that? Oh, that's.
Highland Ridge.
Highland Ridge, yeah.
But I think it's probably a little too far up.
It's down here.
It's down a little bit.
Hmm. Yeah, and it's, actually, it's a triangle and, uh. Okay.
Really more of a polygon.
I'll check with Matt.
Okay.
But given the fact he's already identified the parcels, I would think it'd just be bang, 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 turn them green. And then we can determine whether there's anything else we've left out.
Right, it probably won't take him very long to actually do. It's just whether he has the time to sit down and do it within the allotted two weeks.
Right. The, uh.
Does this.
I think Jay is that, that the zoning map doesn't show roads. Once they leave Berlin, so we don't have to worry about that.
Oh, good.
That's why I didn't even notice it was outside of town.
Right? All right, I'll check.
Now, what about the, um, the new roads, like the, uh. Mark Rhodes Road and the West Street Crossing Road, those must be on there?
Or Wilson Road?
Yeah, there's one. There's one right here, right?
It's one off of Peach Hill, too, that's new.
Peach Hill, it's like somewhere around here.
Uh, it's further up. It's right on the border.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
What about the land we just bought?
Yeah, that's included in this. Um, you see it's there in the hash blue. So that, that would, but that's not been put into ARC yet, so.
Right. But the corner of Lyman and Linden has, will, um. That's all those red outline parcels. So those are all, would all be green.
Yeah, everything outlined in red is gonna turn green. Um.
Yeah, geez, all the Forty Cave stuff's not even. That was, that was quite a while ago.
Yep, so.
The end of Allen Road, yeah.
Um, but I'll check on those. It's Pollard Road.
Mm-hmm.
Gibbs.
Where are they? Oh, it gives.
Is it Gibbs up off of Peach Hill?
Yes.
So it's Gibbs and Pollard that got accepted at town meeting.
Right, and then all the stuff.
This is Pollard right here.
That one's Pollard, yeah.
Yeah, did we? Um.
And then this road, yeah, the land here's, it's already written red, right? So that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay, can we, we table this and move on to Emily so we can keep this agenda going?
Yeah.
We can bring this up at the end if we want. Is Emily available, Carolyn?
Uh, I believe so. Emily, is that you?
It is.
Hello. How's everyone doing?
Good, thank you. How are you?
Great.
Good.
I'm, I'm going to Florida in the morning, so I'm very happy. Good for you. I'm going on vacation finally. Cool, so, um. Hopefully everyone got a chance to look over the Housing Production Plan with the Incorporated edits. Um, and I guess we're just looking to take a vote on that tonight, so it would be a vote to adopt the Housing Production Plan. Um, and then I just need to take the plan to the Select Board as well to, um. Get them to vote to adopt it, too. And then I can send it off to the state and they've got about a month to review it. And get back with me any like feedback or edits or anything. Sometimes there's a few minor. Things that I might have missed, but, um, usually they just accept it and then. You've got a Housing Protection Play, Plan in place for the next five years. Woo-hoo, yeah. I'm excited.
I'll make a motion if no one has any further comments.
Well, we can bring that up when we.
All right.
People we vote.
I make a motion to accept Emily's hard work in the form of a Housing Production Plan.
Second.
Okay, I have a vote and a second to adopt the. Renewally revised Housing Production Plan. Is there any discussion?
So Emily, if the state makes some suggestions.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we include those. Do we then? Revote? On the modified plan?
If they're pretty minor changes, then I would say it's okay, um. But if it's something substantial, then I, I would bring it back to the boards to, to revote.
But it doesn't need to go back to the state at that point. They've accepted it.
Um, I will, I would make the changes and then resubmit to the state and then they'd send a letter of approval.
And so if. If we decided that there was something we wanted to include. After the state approves it, we can't do that, right?
No, I think in the guidelines of housing production plans, they say like, for example, if new data, it comes along. And you want to update the data, that's okay to do. And I don't believe you have to, I'll double check that, but I don't think you have to resubmit.
Okay, good. That's what I wanted to find out. Good.
Yeah.
So if, for instance, the Housing Trust had some comments, they meet tomorrow night. And we, the Housing Coordinator is gonna meet with them for the first time, I think, tomorrow night, but I mean, she and they might very well say, oh, you know, here's something that slipped by. It, it might be something that could get thrown in.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good. I like it. Thanks.
Yes, thank you. My pleasure. And then I don't know if anyone saw, but I did send out a draft of the, um, Master Plan Housing Chapter. Um, so in summary, that's just, um, I took kind of the, the. Key parts of the, um. Housing Production Plan and then use the structure of the previous chapter, the, the one you have now from two thousand and thirteen. And, um, so it's a, it's a more condensed. Uh, summarized version of, of the Housing Production Plan, basically. And then. At the very end of the document is the goals, and I know we had talked about the, the Master Plan Goals kind of a while back, um. So I just, most of the goals are, are the same from the previous plan, but some I just tweaked the language a little bit to be updated, like. For example, the first strategy, I think, referenced River Bridge, which has been pretty much accomplished in terms of the, the residential part of it. Um, so I just kind of tweaked the language a little bit about that. Um, and then I added in a few new goals, but I think you hadn't seen, and we had reviewed all of these goals and strategies before, but, um. I just highlighted them in red, just so you, um, know which ones are, are kind of new and which ones are from the previous plan. Um, so I don't know what you want to do in terms of next steps for that, um. The master plans have a little more leniency, I think, than like. Getting approved by the state and things like that. Um. So I don't know, you want to take a couple of weeks and, and read it over and if there's any edits or anything, you want me to come back, um, or just email me? It's, it's up to you. Let me know what, what you'd like to do.
Yeah, I think if we had a couple of weeks to thaw through it and then if we see anything that's alarming, we can let you know and. If not, we can just say, looks great.
Great, um, that sounds good and. I'm not sure if you want me to do anything different with like the formatting to make it format. Um, in the, the, the way that the master plan is now, or you need me to go into your existing master plan document and swap out the chapters. Also, just let me know what you want to do about that. I'm not sure exactly your process for, cause you do like chapter by chapter.
Um, well, we should vote on the acceptance first.
Right. Any more discussion? Nope, seeing none, I'll ask you to vote to adopt the Housing Production Plan. Jay Teach.
Aye.
Carol McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. I have one question for you and it's how you gain, get the data. So I was reading through the, the document and I noted that there was fifty-six units of housing that are considered second home or vacation home. Um, and I understand how, because you have people that have made their residencies in Florida. How do you get that data? How do you figure out that? Is there a designation from the assessors or is it voting records? How do you determine that there was that many units?
Um, yeah, that data came from the census. Um, so that would have been when the census takers go around and ask, is someone, is this someone's primary residence or? From whatever time they take the census and, or is this typically unoccupied?
Okay.
Um. It seems like a lot, though, doesn't it?
I thought so.
Yeah. It's interesting, but that one.
That many snowbirds that make their, make their residents down in Florida or south.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I could see that you'd have X amount of units, but that seemed to be a little bit higher for me, but.
Got a couple, a couple of over fifty-five communities, too, though, so that might skew it a little.
Yeah.
How many, how many units at Brook Lane do you think are secondary town?
Hard to say, maybe a dozen?
And then, I mean, I imagine some of the apartments are secondary.
So, but this was, was, was dwelling units, not, it was desert, it was different than rental units, so.
I think it, like, an apartment counts as a dwelling unit. But the apartments at, at like River, at River Bridge.
Maybe, because, but I don't know, because it, it did have rental units. Was a designation, so would that be a subset of that or would that be a completely different? I took it as completely different. Cause the totals add up, the, you know, when you add up all the individual categories, the total, the total, right?
Hmm.
Your clerk still have her hand up?
Yes.
May you promote her, please?
People are very quick to tell me when they have reversed their living situation. Their second house now becomes their primary residence, but they still want to be in Berlin, but not as a voter. And there is a provision in V R I S that I can make note of that.
Ah, okay.
Hmm.
Thank you.
And it's, it's climbing.
Well, the population's aging, too.
Yep.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Um. Mister Della Penna also has his hand up? You may. Craig?
I'm gonna be your speaker in a couple of minutes, but I did want to mention that in my day job, I am a Realtor. And we have access to ways to determine. How many non, of. Who owns a house but lives elsewhere? Put it simply like that. And it can be done in moments for the entire community. Any Realtor based in Berlin can do this for you.
Hmm.
Done instantly.
No, I was just, the question was where they're pulling the data from. So.
Well, this one I'm talking about is, uh, from the Warren Group. Based in Boston, all properties on the M L S. The standardized assessor data in a format that's standard across, standardized across the full spectrum. Is through the Warren Group out of Boston and any Realtor has access to that data.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, so we pretty much set with. What you need, Emily?
I think so, yeah. Um, just take a look over that, um. That chapter that I sent out and just send me any feedback that you got. Um, if it's really substantial, I'm happy to, to come to, um, an upcoming meeting.
Okay.
Um, and then I'll, I'll let you all know how the, the Select Board votes. I'm gonna try to get on an agenda. Uh, as soon as I can for them. So I will keep you all updated.
Perfect. Great.
Great.
Don't have, don't forget to come back from Florida.
Yeah, I'll be back on Sunday, unfortunately. Hard at work on Monday morning.
Well, have fun.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Bye. Good night.
Okay, moving on, can you promote, um, Craig, please?
I can. Gets to be a panelist this time.
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Welcome to the board. The floor is yours.
Thank you. How many people are in on the meeting here? I've never seen a format that I couldn't see all the other attendees.
Um, so right, because this is a webinar, not a um, not a meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so this, everybody that you can see is the board. And then the um, audience, there's two, two members in the audience at the moment.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, my name is Craig Delapena, and I've been going in to Berlin for many years, observing oddities and anomalies and in developing trail world. I've been um, I've been involved in rail trail development for about twenty eight years. I've written three books on this subject, have given over twenty, uh, twelve hundred lectures in twenty one states. I'm reassembling the longest dead railroad corridor in New England, which is the one that runs through Berlin. And um, so what I'm going to show you here tonight is a presentation that's pertinent to Berlin here. And it's um, I've got four presentations this month. And this will be one of them, and they're all basically similar. I'm going to give you an update about what's going on on the Mass Central Rail Trail Corridor. It's, it's been a forty, forty plus year journey, believe it or not. And no one ever thought it could be reassembled. But now we know it can be. And we know it's going to be impactful. And I'll get into it right now, and I'll show you what's going on if you would let me turn on my presentation. I'll click on it here. And turn it on. Can you see that? Okay?
No.
You have to share your screen.
Do I share the screen or do you share the screen?
You do.
It's about the bottom of your zoom window.
Okay, click this down.
Choose which screen you're going to share.
Share screen, yes. And here is the presentation. I'll click share.
There we go.
Okay.
Now you have to put it in, you gotta put it in presentation mode now, Craig.
Yeah, it doesn't show up as your screen.
It's the little, on the lower right hand corner, it's the little um, slide projector screen icon just to the left of the zoom bar.
There, there we go. Now it should be coming up now.
Now we're seeing your presenter screen. When you do, uh, do you have more than one monitor on your computer?
No, it's just one.
Okay. If you go to the lower right hand corner there and you push the uh, little slide projector slide logo icon, you're not getting, it's not.
Is that what that's supposed to be?
Yeah.
Craig, right down at the bottom, next to where it says ninety eight percent.
I don't see.
Oh.
It's asking you to register about something live demo. Let me kill this off. Kill this off. How about this?
You get the, up at the top, um, title bar too, there's one icon too, um, or you got auto save on, save. So third one over from there.
Oh, there is, yeah. Or you could use it, the view choice on the bar across the the menu bar across the top under view, it would have full screen.
I'm not seeing that on here.
Center mode. Yeah.
Are you looking at your PowerPoint page?
We've got your screen and you're seeing what we should be seeing on Zoom.
There we go. I think that's it now, right?
The, you're on the right screen now.
Yeah.
Yeah, can you see that now?
Yeah.
There you go.
Okay.
Good job.
All right. Get rid of this little thing on the top here. I guess I'm going to be just dealing with that. So here we are. I thought maybe the cons comm is going to be here tonight, but I'm wrong. And uh, this is Mass Central. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm also the chair of the Conservation Commission.
Oh, that's right, Carolyn, I forgot.
So I am wearing both hats.
Okay. So here's a map of the corridor, and it's um, if you go to masscentralrailtrail.org, and I'm gonna, everything you see here, this is going to be kept, and I'm going to give you a link also, so you don't have to worry about losing any of this. All the stuff I'm going to be presenting here tonight goes to separate hot links onto other websites or places. And so it's going to be very comprehensive, and I'm going to dash through it. But don't worry, because you're going to be able to experience it at your own leisure. But this is our contemporary map of the corridor. We just had a ribbon cutting today in Hardwick, Massachusetts, for almost another mile of the corridor. The sections on here that show up in brown, and this is on the Mass Central website showing um, showing pretty much um, a scalable huge Google map that you can create here that's this uh, shows paved or stone dust surfaces or stuff that is at least publicly owned. Red equals closed, green, um, the light green equals um, stone dust past, the green, uh, dark green equals um, asphalt, and it's pretty comprehensive here. But we're going to be in Berlin tonight. This has been a forty year experience. I'll be talking about the same presentation October fourth at DOT's Moving Together Conference. Now, the forty years, this has been a long journey. Nobody ever thought it could actually be done until recently. And I'm going to connect the dots for you tonight. Uh, Steve Jobs once said, you can't connect the dots going forward only by looking backwards. And we're going to go through four separate timeframes. Disappointing years, the regroup and recover years, the tipping point years, and the breakthrough. We are in a breakthrough here. The, this is an old Boston Domain Railroad map, and the southernmost east-west red line is this corridor. And it was the third east-west route across the state, by the way, and the one that avoided most of the cities, and so went out of business fairly quickly. And in nineteen eighty, State Parks Agency purchased the eleven most, excuse me, the westernmost eight and a half miles of the corridor and began a thirteen year process to build out that section. And where I'm sitting right now is at the western end there in Village of Florence, section of North Hampton in my real estate office. In nineteen eighty eight, the Fisk family walked from North Hampton's Union Station all the way to North Station in Boston, and they write a manuscript that was never published. A copy was given to a top DEM official who kept it in his desk. And I've got a copy in the late nineteen nineties. And I had it up on the website. But the family, uh, the father since passed away, uh, one of the sons didn't like me having it on the website. So I took him out to dinner and and they're okay, but I think eventually we're going to have this thing published. Moving forward, nineteen ninety three, the Norwattic Rail Trail, that's how you pronounce that word, Norwattic Rail Trail. And that's actually the name of my organization, Norwattic Network, and I'll talk more about that later. In nineteen ninety five, near you, the Wachusett Greenways was uh, formed, and they purposely decided to build out their sections as a soft surface stone dust trail, not a paved trail. Their process avoided DOT type type projects would take a longer time. They went for smaller funds, shorter segments, volunteer based projects. They've now got about twenty miles done. The disappointing years, Belcher Town and Weston on the Wayside Trail, you are part of what was called the Wayside Trail. It's actually still branded that to a degree, but everything on this trail now is called the, whatever the local name is, it's a segment of the Mass Central Rail Trail. Now, they voted it down, and for different reasons, I won't get too deep dive here tonight, other than to say that was astounding to newspapers all over the country. And the Commonwealth Magazine, about a year later, after the vote in both communities, they they noticed that both were on the same corridor, and there was never any talk of this being a hundred mile trail. Everybody just cared about their little section. But this, this is going to be easy to find through the the link I'm going to give you at the end, so you'll want to check this out. But it was in the Los Angeles Times, other newspapers all over, several commentary op ed pieces, you're gonna you're going to be stunned to see all this stuff. I'm sort of like the Rain Man of rail trails. I've been doing this a long time, and I know quite a bit about it. And I'm sort of like the Forrest Gump as well. I've been a witness to iconic events that we didn't know were going to be iconic until years later, and we go back and see how things knit together, connecting the dots. Nineteen ninety nine, the State Parks Agency put together a Greenway vision to talk about a hundred mile trail across the state. First time that was ever even thought of. And I'm just going to blast through these highlighted areas. These are high points of the report. Shows that this really is something important, and we really need to do this, to fix, to figure out how to do this. And so you're going to see this at your own leisure. This is another part of the thing. Nineteen ninety nine, Wachusett Greenways held the first Golden Spike event where Congressman McGovern spoke enthusiastically about this. Our ninth one is going to be, this is a typo, ten, not ten thirteen, it's going to be ten fourteen, and Saturday in Natick, I'll fix that tomorrow. But um, this will be our ninth event. And this one will be probably the most impactful, and I'll explain that when I go along here. The biggest one, by the way, was in Waltham, where four hundred people came during the gubernatorial campaign of twenty oh two. Now, this is how the Norwattic Network got formed. This is a contest that was formed during, it was uh, the Federal Highway Administration encouraged all states to have a millennial trail for the coming of the new millennium. And they wanted a trail chosen for each state that was going to be talking about the best things for each, each uh, each community, uh, each trail that was emblematic of the, the nice things that made it tied into what's special about each state. And so the Norwattic Network was formed. Uh, then that's the bridge over the Connecticut River, the signature property on this corridor. This is operated by DEM. DCR now. Uh, this is our contemporary logo. When I came back onto the board in twenty nineteen, they wanted to uh, shut it down, and they were always only about the the westernmost eight or ten miles of the corridor. And I said, no, I'll come back on, don't shut it down. Uh, we'll keep the five oh one C three going, we'll expand the board to be encompassing of the entire corridor, not just the westernmost few miles. And we're going to expand the mission. We're going to reassemble the rest of the corridor. And in fact, uh, this, one of the first things I did, I was, I used to market rail freight. And I used to set up the plan to start up and manage the operations of several big transloading facilities. And I have a background in railroad history, and I was invited to write a series of books on this subject. And later I was hired by Rails to Trails Conservancy as an organizer. And I was familiar with all the wars going on in Massachusetts back then, and a lot of them were about the surface. People living in rural areas didn't like the idea of the trail they're using now have to be paved. And that was the law. Massachusetts had Mass DOT or Mass Highway back then. They were the only state in fifty to require paving. So job number one for me was to erase that directive. And here we are on the West Boylston section in nineteen ninety eight or ninety nine. I'll, I'll, I'll tie everything down when I do my memoir. But the guy on the right was the lead investigator for the State Senate Post Audit Oversight Committee. And he and I brought all these folks from the Office on Disabilities and the Architectural Review Board to go on a stone dust path in West Boylston to say that, how is it Mass DOT won't allow this? And so they loved it, the letter was written, and it, the good ship Mass, Mass Highway was uh, was turned around, they threw the tiller over. And uh, and so here, a few years later, the Mass DOT, as they later became called, they decided to rewrite their design guidebook and to really fully integrate this in. And this is one of those places where you're going to want to check it out, that you can do a soft surface trail if your community wants. And it all took place because of that experience in West Boylston a few years earlier. Now, when, when Belcher Town was voted down, zero, zero miles of that corridor in a public protected status. And so one of my friends decided he was going to buy two and a half miles from the B and M Railroad and then give it to a local land trust for a twenty percent discount down to eighty thousand. But the land trusts there were not, let's call them linear thinking land trusts, they were only rectangular thinking land trusts. And when they rejected it because it was too radioactive, let's say, um, he asked me what to do. I said, well, you're going to form your own land trust, build a land trust, stack the board of directors with linear thinking people. You can do that. And they did. And they started to reacquire the corridor over years. I did a similar thing in two thousand and five, when I watched a piece of this, this very corridor get sold to a high school principal who wanted to buy the corridor behind his house. About three and a half miles of the corridor were on the market. He bought the section behind his house so he could block kids from walking to school from their downtown or village center of Gilbertville out to the new elementary school. And DOT didn't lift a finger to stop that. I said, time's up. I'm going to do something edgy. I'm buying corridor, and I'm going to block sales to adjoining landowners. And then I'm going to go meet my new neighbors, and I'm going to do high profile press releases to make DOT look bad. And they don't like that, believe me. But this is one of my three bridges I owned. That was the last of its type, by the way, still standing in southern New England, would have been scrapped out had I not done this. And so my neighbors were all angry until I told them they would never see ATVs on it, and then they, they mellowed out after that. And so there were four, uh, three, three large bridges on this corridor. This is now owned by a local land trust, a linear thinking land trust. They've built out the corridor, they've built out another six miles, all my bridges are all safe and prim and proper. And uh, and then in two thousand and six, I'm biking across the state with a travel writer from, from New York Times. And we're coming to Berlin where the tracks are still in place. Believe it or not, Massachusetts owns more miles of dead railroad than any other, any other state in the United States. And most of that is owned by the MBTA. And most of that is still with all the tracks in place. And there is, I'm going to show you a link later when you see the whole composite of everything, how this came to be, is a six step infographic, how we came to do this. But I came upon this, this was a little road, little street created near the Wheeler's Garage. This was, this was completely, I would just gently say inappropriate here. This was not the fault of anybody in Berlin. This was the fault of the privatized real estate department of the MBTA. Because I had a confab with the, the head of the privatized real estate company there that ran the MBTA's real estate holdings. And they were looking to sell the corridors to communities, and I said, no, we don't need to buy these things. We already bought them once, we, the citizens of the Commonwealth, we don't need to buy them twice. I want you to make them free, available to the communities that want to move forward with these projects. And and I was told that uh, that'll be okay, but we don't want to hear about any brownfields. And we want to have an insurance policy in place. And so when I saw this, I took these very pictures, sent it to the MBTA's privatized realistic department and said, you can't defend your own land forty miles out. You need, you need to lease this to DCR. And to my surprise, two months later, they did. And guess what happened then? Since the lease agreement treated DCR like an municipality, the lawyers at DCR wouldn't allow it to take place. So it sat for four years until, and I don't want to get into great details here, you'll read it in my memoir, but they eventually got the lease and they sent in uh, one of their smooth talking gentlemen to go and meet with all the communities along the Wayside Corridor. to go and meet with all the communities along the wayside corridor, all the way out to Berlin. But starting in Waltham, Weston, Wayland, Sudbury, um, Hudson and out to you guys. We're going to build the trail, we don't know exactly when, but we're going to build it when we can. And uh, and then shortly after that, they went into Burl, uh, excuse me, into Weston and said, we know you voted it down, so we'll do you last. And you can touch it, see it, feel it, you'll get familiar and see how great it is and you'll love it. And, and then Eversource came forward and said they were going to do a grid enhancements project and rebuild the, the overhead grid and put one underground in Sudbury and Hudson. And build a more robust resilient grid in your neighborhoods. And that's how everything happened. And um, a couple of other things happened here, rec use statutes, um, recre, all states have recreational use statutes. In Massachusetts in two thousand and nine, they changed the rec use statutes to make uh, railroads and utilities to have no liability if they open up their corridor to these recreational purposes. And uh, that was notable. In two thousand and nine, they uh, and, excuse me, two thousand and thirteen, they came up with a, another tweak of uh, railroad adjacent properties to make rail with trail easier as well. And so Mass D O T put their letterhead on it and said, they flipped the idea of rail with trail. If, if you, they made it easier to build, I won't get into great detail here on this, but you'll see when you look it up in your own. In two thousand and seventeen, I was involved in four wars in Eastern Mass, teaching locals how to not lose, how to prevail, how to ensure that their trail gets built. And they, I had been doing this for years and, and in two places, a couple of uh, a couple of places in Eastern Mass, the, the battle hardened veterans, let's say, let's say I call them, the pro-trail forces were getting burned out and dis- disillusioned and they didn't want to continue on. And they said they were going to quit and I said, no, you can't quit, you just don't know what's going, going on a couple of towns away. I'll launch an e-newsletter, we'll set it up. Um, I'll hire an assistant, we'll run it through constant contact. We'll pull newspaper content from all newspapers, we'll do a search every day looking for stars about rail trails, greenways, bike paths, bike ways, all throughout the United States. This thing has grown to be now it's over fifteen thousand people and policymakers in eight states. Top ten percent of all constant contacts newsletters worldwide. This, I, this is like a tiger by the tail. I can't even begin to tell you how impactful this has been and I can't begin to even think about giving it up. Two thousand and seventeen also, they opened the twentieth of the thirty mile section of the Mass Central Corridor. We're getting closer to today. Two thousand and seventeen, the Belcher Town Land Trust donates five miles of them in this corridor to the town, making the town owned sections nine and a half miles of the uh, five and, excuse me, seven point five of the nine and a half miles overall. And a, a Friends group was formed there, they don't call it the rail trail anymore, that was radioactive. And so they call it Friends of the Belcher Town Greenway. Robust website, talking about all the things going on in Belcher Town. And um, they be, they've begun to get grant requests sent into uh, Mass Trails. And also in two thousand and eighteen, creation of Mass Trails. This was uh, when, in New York, when a report was created that shows that, that the Erie Canal Trail, only three quarters built, was producing two hundred and fifty million dollars a year to the state. When that report was given to the Governor Cuomo at the time, he was so stunned, he ordered D O T to build four hundred miles in four years, creating what is called today, the Empire State Trail. When that happened, when that change took place in New York, uh, Governor Baker here created the Trails Team. They meet inside the governor's suites of offices and they, they, they're from different agencies that have a role in developing rail trails. And most of the agencies involved are in part of Trails Team, they meet twice a month inside the governor's suite of offices. And they literally take down silos between agencies, it's been very impactful. Here's twenty nineteen, ribbon cutting in Weston and Wayland, the guy in the dark blue, that's Larry Kiernan. When we have our next conference, he'll be leading a bike tour of, of uh, Weston, Wayland. Do you know there's a tunnel? Of course you know there's a tunnel, you live near to Clinton. Most people though, don't have a clue that there's a thousand foot tunnel there. This is getting Renaissance now, starting twenty twenty, they started to pull this together, the iconic thing. In two years, we're going to be at seventy five miles open. Now, D O T knew that they know, they know exactly what's going on here, they're giving grants to help build it out. But now, what's left beyond seventy five miles is going to be very expensive. How do we do that? They don't, they didn't even know if it could be reassembled. So during the pandemic, they commissioned a study to see if it actually could be reassembled. You're looking at segment one of three volumes here. This is very detailed, page by page by page laid out. This is highly detailed showing where every missing bridge is, there's at least five big bridges over five hundred feet long. As, as you all know, from Five Corners, that's been gone. There's been bridges stripped out of this corridor illegally. There's processes in Massachusetts where, uh, that defends former railroad corridor against theft or, or, or giving the state of uh, the state D O T a right to, uh, have a, a right of overseeing on construction near or on top of corridor. And so, but they concluded here that this thing could be pieced together, reassembled, but it's going to be complicated. But it begs the question, what would a hundred mile trail be worth for the Commonwealth? And the communities along the way? So here we go. This, this is a scene of, from the Boston to Maine Railroad Historical Society's book about the Mass Central Corridor. They call it Central Mass, I call it Mass Central, the original name, the more impactful name. But this was the train that crossed there at the face of the Wachusia Reservoir Dam. This was taken down in the mid seventies. We collectively as a nation did so many stupid things in the seventies, including construction. Nothing built in the seventies will live to see their hundredth anniversary, nothing. Gone, gone, gone. Swift River between Belcher Town and the Bonzville section of Palmer. This was torn down illegally in nineteen eighty. And then you have your section here, oh, Five Corners. Big hulking, heavy, heavy duty bridge there. When that gets rebuilt someday as a bike ped bridge, it'll be much lighter and more attractive. This is, this was written in the City Lab e-news, e-newsletter, hmm, probably eight years ago. This is bike ped projects, especially projects that have bridges involved, are the only things D O T can build to a ribbon cutting that will have hundreds of people come to the ribbon cutting. Each and every time. This was a story about all this and this will be in your little impactful packet here when you go to the end here, this is the two page infographic um, that talks about everything I just mentioned here. In two thousand and twenty two, we put together an R F P, a request for proposals that asked the basic question, what would a hundred mile trail mean to the Commonwealth and the communities along the way? So you can see this, there's a link to this. We hired a consultant out of Boston headquartered in Portland, Oregon. And Cambridge Econometrics, not Cambridge, Mass, but Cambridge, England. It's a friend of mine who lives locally here who does projects for D O Ts that are uh, where he, he shows how much a D O T can feel comfortable within a huge capital project to see if it's actually worth the public investment. And usually does um, analysis of passenger rail restoration projects to see if they're worthy of public investment. So whenever he's a part of a project, they take notice. And, and this is it when it was done, this is the bridge over the Connecticut River uh, near where I live. And that's our east west mountain range and the Connecticut River Valley here, by the way. Most mountain ranges run north south, we're a little different, that runs north south here, uh, excuse me, east west here. But this is uh, this is there, this, when this came out, it was at fifty five miles, we just crossed the sixty mile mark this afternoon. It'll bring, the results of this report are very compelling, it's going to bring four to five million users a year. Just in Worcester County, there'll be nine hundred and fifty thousand plus people. Two thirds, almost, two thirds of the state's population lives within ten miles of this thing. There'll be four to five hundred thousand overnight visitors a year. And two hundred million dollars a year in impacts a year. Nawatik Network. This is our next big conference on the fourteenth, we're going to be in Natick, not by accident, that's a hotbed of rail trail development. And it's close in for a lot of impactful people in the state government to be able to attend this. And we're going to have lots of uh, impactful things happening here, we're going to have some walking and biking tours, we hope we have a good group from Berlin to come here. I get called, by the way, and you know, I'm, I'm, I'm a Realtor, I think I mentioned. I specialize in the sale of houses near rail trails. And that's because of all the antis they met over the years that it could never happen, they would, their houses would be upside down in value and they wouldn't be able to sell and I, I proved them all wrong. But the uh, just about a week ago, I'm not sure if you saw this, the Mass Office of Outdoor Recreation was stood up with a new director, Paul Johnegy, who has been working for D C R for many years and now it's an independent thing outside of D C R. And, and this is uh, he'll be one of the speakers at this event. We're trying to get the Lieutenant Governor to come here and um, I think, I think we're going to pull it off, but, but we'll see. But over the years, we, we've given Golden Spike Event awards here to uh, to people who have done impactful things to help build out this corridor. The guy on the left, Bruce Panino, he's the guy, he's a bridge structural engineer and he donated his time to go and uh, do analysis of bridges that are left standing on the corridor to develop plans to restore them. And he actually did the restoration plan on my bridges. So we hope you all can come. The uh, go to that, you'll see this, honeyurl dot com, honeyurl dot com, Mass Central Rail Trail, M C R T dot twenty three, two oh two three. So, thank you so much. This, um, I want to say that this was a quick presentation, I was just ramming through here. The, I know that, that things seem to be turning around in beautiful Berlin. And I would like to say that there should be a Friends Group affiliated with this trail project here, it's going to happen. Um, I've built trail groups throughout the northeast United States over the last twenty five years. And we make them very compelling speakers at the local level. And I think it would be a great thing. Uh, as you know, we're in a seller's market right now and people are buying houses where they can afford and prices are going up, so people are moving further out. And people, I've been approached by four parties in the last year uh, who bought houses right next to the corridor and called me to find out why it's taking so long to get built. I said, you need a Friends Group there and you need for things to work their way out to Berlin. And so there is a core group here, there's a group in Hudson led by the guy, by the name of guy, um, Tom Green is very, very genteels, very well spoken fellow who uh, who's got grants already to help build out the trail through Hudson. Uh, I was approached by uh, an attorney representing landowners in Berlin who want to build a um, let's see, like a, like a generational place for younger family members to buy some land or have it gifted to them. It's behind the dead railroad, that's the Boston to Maine Railroad section. Now that it's owned by C S X, when they buy corridor, it gets locked down for two years. We're now about fifteen months in, they won't talk to anybody about buying any of the old B and M Railroad's assets until they make their final determination what they bought, they had no idea what they're buying. And they actually do deep dive title searches on everything they own. And then they're going to be open to selling the stuff they own. And so uh, there is a family that wants to have a driveway cut across the dead railroad corridor. And then they can put a driveway in with frontage on one of your streets to get to the backside, to have like a little compound of houses built back there where they could all uh, have family events. And so they're doing their research, they know they can't get a deal at the railroad, but you're going to see this come before you in the coming months. This is, people love these places, people love them.
Craig, Craig, if I could stop you for one second, that um, scenario that you just described, are you saying that that family is interested in having the rail trail?
Yes, yes, I see this every day.
Because I know which property you're talking about, so I'm just.
Ben, I know you guys are all, it's a small town, everybody knows what's going on. But I, I didn't get any names, but it is a, maybe you've been outreach by the attorney already, but it's, they want to do this and there's no downside to living next to a trail. I live eight feet from one of the oldest municipal built trails in uh, New England and we operate a bed and breakfast there. And I go into pressure packed public meetings, I'm fearless, have been accosted three times. And uh, and I tell, I tell people, I know you're fearful of change. But, but I live eight feet from one. And, and oh, by the way, we operate a bed and breakfast, they'll give you a complimentary weeknight stay. If that might make you see things better, but it has to be on a weeknight because I want you to wake up to the laughter of children biking to school. And how many kids bike to school in your town? And so that helps sell the idea. Where I'm sitting right now in Florence, it's a hundred yards from where Sojourner Truth, Frederick Douglass, William Lloyd Garrison, all came up with the Utopian Society here. But the railroad came to town here to serve that mill. But within a hundred and fifty miles where I'm sitting right now, Eastern New York, Southern Vermont, New Hampshire, all Southern New England, is the densest network of dead steam railroad corridor in America. It didn't go to obscure, forgotten, piece of junk coal line branch lines where nothing is and no one lives. This is right where people live, work and play. This will, twenty five years from now, this will be more like the Netherlands than the Netherlands is today. This can't be stopped, this is, this is the, the oncoming generation. Matter of fact, have you all heard of the three stages of truth? The first stage is people will laugh at your new idea, that'll never happen. The second stage is they, they become really dead end or fighters, extreme opponents to the project. Then, the third stage appears and it, and it's, who could be opposed to this? We are in the third stage in lots of ways here. And I know that one of the things that's taking place in Berlin is Nineteen Carter. I travel in the historic preservation of war and world and I also get places to pass the C P A. Worcester County is a dead zone for C P A passage, you did pass it here. But I went to when Nineteen Carter was one of the, the presentations at the Historic Preservation Conference in Worcester a few years ago. I went there, I wanted to see that because I'm familiar with, with uh, Methodist architecture and uh, there's a lot of Methodist campground communities around New England. And I love to see that, that is the third place in Berlin. The first place is your family, the second place is your workplace. The third place is where you see people outside of the first two places. And lots of times it's the rail trail, it used to be like the V F W or Kiwanis Club or maybe even the church, hearing the concept of Nineteen Carter, that used to be the church. But now it's, it's a third place by definition. And so you're starting to see this thing taking place here and you're right on, right on target, right on target here.
Um, if I could also just let you know that there is a Friends Group that is trying to start. Um, if they reached out to you, would you help move them along in the right direction?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I don't charge on this stuff. I, as I said, I built fringe groups all over. The, uh, we have an e-newsletter, as, as I mentioned, that goes out widely and I would love everybody here to sign up for it. Cause you, you just don't, you don't see it in your day-to-day lives, what's going on. And it's so impactful. This will be, people are gonna love this thing when it gets built out. And, and I should mention also Walter Bickford. He's a, he's an inspirational guy here and you're lucky to have him and have him still around and yes, Tim Wheeler.
So, can you talk about the East Coast Greenway Alliance and the fact that they've identified Berlin as a route through from east of us into Worcester and joining up with the Quinsigerman Trail, I guess there.
Um, I used to, I used to be the Massachusetts Chair of the East Coast Greenway. And the mission statement there is to connect all the cities along the east coast from Maine to Florida. It's sort of like the opposite of the Appalachian Trail, which was to avoid all the cities and be on the mountains. This is going to be in the valleys and it's going to connect the cities. So it's a complete opposite of the Appalachian Trail. And they changed their route, Tim, in the last eighteen months. But I don't want to say that it's changed and it's locked in stone. No. It's been changed several times and I'm not worried about it. Currently, well, the route used to go along the seacoast into Boston, out on this corridor. All the way out to perhaps, um, hmm, perhaps Holden, West Boylston, then come through the tunnel and then go south to Worcester. And then the other points, south, south running trails into Rhode Island, then west to Hartford, and then down to New York. Their current route avoids Worcester. The current route, if you go to walkway.org, I think is there, no, excuse me, uh, greenway.org. Walkway.org takes you to the longest pedestrian bridge in the world that I had a hand in. That's in Poughkeepsie, six thousand foot pedestrian bridge. Uh, but the greenway.org takes you to their website, East Coast Greenway. And it shows unequivocally, they plan now to come out as far as Sudbury. And then turn left, turn south to Framingham. To other trails being developed through Sherburne and then closer into Rhode Island and get to Rhode Island that way. And avoiding Worcester. You know, I could be upset and, no, I'm not upset. Cause I know, I saw two changes in the last election cycle, what happened in Worcester. They passed the CPA. I was the first paying tenant in Worcester's Union Station. Um, honest to God, back in the late nineties, that's how long I've been doing this. But they also changed their D O, their DPW to a DOT. That says it all. It's not like rearranging the chairs on the Titanic people. When a DPW goes to become a DOT, the transportation that gets delivered. There's jargon for delivering transportation. It becomes for everyone, not merely for cars and trucks. And I know how to make a railroad work. I used to, used to market rail freight and I set up the biggest transloads in Southern New England and I used to strip traffic away from the B and M railroad every day. And so for a city to have a DOT, they've, they are becoming in the twenty-first century. And there is now, I don't know if you've heard of a group called Walk Boston for the last twenty, twenty-five years. They've evolved now, not just Walk Boston, but Walk Massachusetts, Walk Mass. To take the message that bicycle pedestrian or basically pedestrian from their realm is important and to teach groups on how to do this, to create Walk Worcester. There is a Walk Worcester now. Walk Bike Walk Springfield, Walk Bike Springfield. They're, they're, every community is starting to get these. It's coming all around. It's very important, um, because the cars are so much larger today and they're much more capable and people just naturally drive faster. So if you get hit by a car today, you're much more likely to die than ten or fifteen years ago. And, um, and with distracted driving and, and so there's a great need for this to have a DOT. Getting back to Worcester. When Worcester, Walk Worcester gets more robust. And they start to identify routes and they bring funding in. You know, I grew up in Hoyok, when Hoyok was the west, the wealthiest place in Western New England. First planned industrial city in the United States. Then the wheels fell off along with all gateway cities today. We call them gateway cities. They're now having a Renaissance because they're being reinvested in again. The best cities, the best thing ever in the world. Best invention ever in the world was the city. Grid pattern streets, sidewalks, porches. And the antique neighborhoods of the past are being discovered by the young people today. They want to live in a place like that. Yes, Tim.
So the, you, you would say, don't give up on the East Coast Greenway Alliance notion and try to incorporate that effort with the Mass Central Rail Trail through Berlin, however we accomplish that.
I'm very patient. I'm very patient and I would urge you to be patient too. I would want you to to encourage the, the Mass Central Rail Trail to come along all the way out to just points west of you to then connect into Worcester. This, this is important. It's important to make our bigger cities nearby more robust and worthwhile. The East Coast Greenway is not, I don't want to say anything bad about them because they're all beautiful, smart, welcoming people who want to build out this trail. It just takes so long in Massachusetts and the leaders who are doing this trail for the East Coast Greenway. They're the, the professional staffers, they don't live in Massachusetts. They don't understand Massachusetts. They, they get wigged out by our processes here. It's different than other states. And so when they were approached with a way to get the trail built quicker, to connect the trail, all they want to do is build it out. If they have to bypass Worcester for a while. They know that I'm in the background, that I'm a city guy and I want to see the city's Renaissance in Massachusetts. Keeping with their mission statement. They'll come back. Don't worry about that, Tim. They will come back. They will come back.
Great, thanks.
Okay, well, we've run a little bit over our time. Nope, that's all right. It was informative and I'm glad you did it. Uh, but I want to, um, if there are any other questions from the board members before we, uh, move on? No? Okay. Thank you for your time, Craig. It was really informative, um.
Just one quick thing. Uh, Craig, I may invite you to Conservation to give a similar presentation if you're um, friendly to that.
Would it be in person?
Uh, we could, we could, we, that room now or we'll very shortly have the ability to do hybrid.
Okay, cause I don't mind going to presentation, because I'll go out to dinner with some of my Berlin friends there and.
All right, I'll be in touch.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Craig. Good luck. Yep, thanks. Carolyn is Angelo in the audience?
Yes.
Can you promote him, please?
I certainly can. Tom, someone in the audience, Liz Johnson also has her hand up.
Okay, let's, um, talk to Angelo first.
Is she related to this?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Don't think so. Angelo, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Um, can we just see what the audience member wants first before we go into our discussion?
Sure.
Excellent, thank you. Can you find out? Um, thank you.
Liz.
Hi, I'm Liz Johnson and I'm from Holden. And I am a member of the Norwattic Network Board. And, um, Craig invited the board members to, um, watch his presentation because I know he's been presenting all over the place. And so members of the board said, hey Craig, can you let us see what you're doing? So that's why I'm here. I'm not a spy. I'm, you know, I'm just, I had so much fun today. I was in Gilbertville, which is a little village that I hope you all get to visit someday. Um, and they were so excited because they just opened a segment of the Mass Central Rail Trail. Couple of weeks ago, I was in Ware, Massachusetts. And you might say, where's where? And everybody makes that silly joke, but it's, uh, like south of Quabin. And it's a very poor, we call them actually, um, gateway villages. We made that term up because they're sort of like gateway cities like Worcester, meaning low income. Um, the only, um, often they are culturally different from the typical New England, uh, white Anglo-Saxon Protestant or Irish or what. And, um, but these, these little gateway villages have been left, um, abandoned. Believe it or not, by the nineteen thirty-eight hurricane. Which you may have heard of. It smashed the Mass Central Rail Trail. It smashed the dam and it killed that little area. So these are people who are very similar to people who live in gateway cities. And, um, but they, they don't have any opportunities. So I just, uh, I joined this board because I love my rail trail. I use the watches at Greenway all the time. And it's just the best thing since sliced, sliced bread in my life. So thank you very much for inviting me and asking me who the heck I am. I'm a retired school teacher. That's all. And I love rail trails. I love kids and I love building community. So that's it for me. I'll say good night.
Thank you.
Thank you for inviting us.
Okay, Angelo.
Hello. All right.
Excellent. Sorry that we're running a little bit behind.
It's okay.
So we're having a follow-up discussion of our, um, our last meeting, well, two meetings ago, I think. Where we were talking about building to rent, or build to rent projects. And we were gonna do some homework, both sides and reconvene. Is that what we're continuing our discussion?
Uh, yes, I believe there was, uh, discussions to be had, uh, with, with the town, right? Um, and I think this was a follow-up to that.
Okay. So what would you, uh, what, what, what did you discover and what would you like to share with us?
Um, I haven't discovered much. I was just, um, you know, I was invited by Jay. I thought this was perhaps, um, a follow-up to discussions that you had had. And gaining a little bit more of an understanding of build to rent, uh, with the town.
Okay, the last time, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, the last thing, last time we met, we talked about was there any models that we or any projects that were either underway or had been completed that we could, um, investigate and find out, you know, what they did. I know there's nothing in New England, right? But there, there were other models, um, some perhaps down south that have done those horizontal landscape, horizontal landscaper type of, uh, developments.
Yes, I, I can provide you with more of that. We've actually, um, kind of put together our own, um, personal deck that's just about complete on explaining the build to rent model. That I will, um, be able to share with the board. Um, so perhaps I can, I can send over a, a couple of examples outside of New England, uh, New England. Uh, as well as that book that, uh, Procopio has put together on build to rent.
Okay. Tim?
Was it, were you working in Haverhill? Is that the other town that you're?
That's one of the towns where we're thinking of bringing this, uh, build to rent to, yes.
So has there been any further res, uh, activity up there since we talked?
There hasn't, um, and it's, um, due to an issue um, with kind of the development plan with, with respect to, um, riverfront. Um, so we're basically redeveloping the plan a little bit, tweaking it a little bit. Um, and then we will, uh, go from there. But, uh, there has been a little bit delay there. It has nothing to do with, uh, pushback.
That project's super dense though, right?
Um, that was about, it was going to be two hundred-ish of BTR units.
So when, when we talked to you last, I think our suggestion was if, that that density, that size probably wouldn't float here, but have you had time to contemplate that as, as a possibility? I mean, how how much can you reduce a project and still make it viable in your, in your view?
Uh huh. Uh, in general, our company tries, um, going forward, our projects like to be a hundred units or more. Um, so that's basically more or less what we would be aiming for, um, for build to rent project or any apartment project that we build.
Right. And, and I think you heard Carolyn last time um, speak to the point of the, you know, under sixty-six units, eh, eh, projects in our experience. Um, where we don't have public water and surge. Um, tend to be able to get through some of the state regulations.
Right. Um, there was mention of a ri- river bridge. There may be public water there in the south part of town in our discussion. Um, so, uh, has anything been discussed, um, between the board members on that or potential there?
Well, I mean, I think that's something that, it, it's a public water supply in the sense that it it meets the state requirement, but it's, it's not a municipal water supply.
Right, it's privately owned.
Privately owned system. So it, it would probably, you know, if you're thinking about that part of town. At some point, it might be worth your while to chat with them to see what their capacity is. They, they might not have capacity for something as large as what you're proposing, um, if you're um, talking about the, you know, more than sixty-six units, for instance. And then the other part of that is, I, I think our, a feeling as a board might very well be that it it might be difficult to go to a town meeting with an overlay proposal and get it accepted if the number was, you know, in that hundred or above range. I mean, that's my sense and I, I think other members probably share that.
Yeah.
And then, you know, so that's a question for you guys to sort of contemplate. I mean, is it even worth your while to, to continue on and um, looking at Berlin as a possible site if, if you couldn't get to that number, um.
Okay.
Cause that'd be helpful to us. If you came back and said, no, it just doesn't work, then, you know, we, we do some more thinking about how how much projects like this mean to us and, you know, whether we think it's um, something that's compatible with what Berlin is trying to accomplish in terms of housing.
Okay. And, uh, could you refresh my memory on how, um, the Rockwell was able to go forward?
That was an overlay. Um, it was a mixed-use project. It started with a hundred apartments and a hundred continual care retirement units. Those continual care retirement community units couldn't find a tenant. And so there was a, um, a, a follow-up town meeting in which there was a modification to the development agreement and the zoning. And so there was a, um, a, a follow-up town meeting in which there was a modification to the development agreement and the zoning. And as a result, the, uh, the change took place to allow the two hundred apartments. The, the main benefit, I think that the town saw with that, was that we, we could get our subsidized housing inventory up over the ten percent number, and put a stop to forty Bs that weren't friendly, um. And right now, we're significantly above the ten percent, so the need to bring in projects on that scale really isn't there anymore, I mean, we're, we're in a situation where we can pick and choose. And I think we're, we've all talked on the planning board for a long time about sort of workforce housing, or cottage housing, and the scale of the units you're talking about fits in with that concept that we've been trying to develop, but we've been trying to, I, I think our sense was that it, it would be a, a much smaller project than what you've proposed in terms of total numbers of units. But that's how River Bridge came to, to be, and I, and I can't imagine the town voting another overlay that would accommodate that, that kind of density, um.
Yeah, there, most people you talk to aren't super excited about how, about the number of units over there.
Yeah, I mean, they voted for it, um, so, you know, it, it was a, a, a choice that the town made. And I think in accomplishing the objective of getting over ten percent, the rest of the town is protected now from sort of stray forty Bs that were pressuring us and popping up in places that made no sense whatsoever. I mean, they were on the end of dead-end roads that public safety is gonna find difficult to get to for the rest of our lives and everybody else's life beyond that, so. We've protected the rest of the town essentially from forty Bs.
How about the, uh, the MBTA Communities Act, is Berlin affected by that?
We're in the donut, so we're not, we're not, we're not one of the MBTA communities.
Okay. Okay. Well, yeah, let me, uh, let me discuss a little bit more internally, um, you know, I could, I could provide examples for you, but I think we should have a discussion internally at Procopio of, you know, of sixty-six units or less, uh, would be, uh, kind of in our peer view, uh, to go forward in Berlin.
Great.
Awesome.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate the time.
Yep, no worries.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Take care.
Take care.
Good night.
Thanks, bye-bye.
Is that all we got?
That's all that's on the agenda. Um, I have a thought, but I won't, I won't share it right now, I'll share it later.
Would you, is, is there anything else, or would you like a motion to adjourn?
Well, we were, you were talking about whatever the hell we were talking about there. When, when we first took on Emily, what, what, oh, we were talking about the map, right? So I'll go and get in touch with, with, uh, Matt, and if, I'll check in with Eloise and the assessors and make sure I understand any other changes that might have taken place that we've missed in past maps, but I think we touched on most of them, so. I'll do that.
You're muted.
You're muted.
He's still mute.
I'll send you the marked up one.
Okay, great.
Any other news to report?
Yeah, I mean, that, the, like I said, the Housing Trust is meeting tomorrow, and the new housing coordinator will be stopping in, um, and I, I, Carrie's making a few changes to the Center Village study, and I think she'll probably send that around to all of us, um, in the next week or so. So we'll have that, um, report that we can pick up and, and evaluate, so that, that's another piece of the puzzle here. And then, um, if we look at the master plan, I mean, it, it probably would make sense for us at some point to evaluate what, what, what goes on the plate next, um.
In terms of long-term projects?
Yeah, cause we wanna keep right after it. You know, we talked about maybe trying to get some money to fund the possibility of a community evaluation of wellness or
Right.
joy or whatever, so, I mean, we can, maybe we'll get.
Can we be the happiest town in Massachusetts?
Trish settles to.
Got the highest growth.
They're coming, I'll chat with her. Good. Town meeting maybe in January, I think?
Nope.
Not at all now?
Officially canceled.
So no town meeting between now and May?
Last I heard, that is the truth. Unless you know something, but I, I got direct contact saying that the, uh, negotiations that would have necessitated of, a winter town meeting have fallen, hmm, that's not the word. Are not, are not progressing.
Broken down, talks of.
Broken down, there you go.
But the Cennes, what, what is this?
I, I can only assume, I don't know that for a fact, but, um. So.
Um, does anyone know who bought, uh, Henry Wheeler's farm? Somebody just grabbed it, it was sitting and sitting and the price was coming down.
They're one point four?
Yeah, they paid higher than what was, I think it come down to one point two or three and somebody, there may have been a little competition going on, and somebody bid one point four and bought, bought it, that's what I heard. And I think there's room for six single families, or somebody may be trying to put more housing on the property in May. In that field, I don't know. Maybe they're gonna start a horse farm, or.
There's not really a lot of room in that field because of the stream.
Oh, yeah? Maybe they're gonna dam it up, make a little pond, use it for irrigation, put some jet skis on it.
This is not nineteen fifty-three.
I have to go get my deer. Thank you, but I bought the Lowe's house, I got these three concrete deer, I found him when we cleaned the woods out. And Henry really liked him and wanted one, so when he wasn't thinking about it, one, one day I, they were really heavy, I took him down with my tractor and stuck one in his woods.
Did you at least paint it for him?
No, you eventually noticed it.
Good.
Uh, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second, and there is no discussion allowed, so I'll ask you to vote, Jay Teach.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye, motion carries unanimous to adjourn.